Regular session of Southerton Borough Council order. As you heard, it is being recorded via Zoom and please rise for the invocation by Council.
Let's pray. Dear God, we come before you today to give you honor and praise for you are worthy of praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you, God, for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for our opportunity to come and to gather together today. We ask you for your hand of blessings to be on this meeting. And as King Solomon asked before us, we ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, as we make decisions that will impact our fellow citizens. Thank you, God, for helping us to accomplish our work and goals that we have set for today. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Richard. Please remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, we were vocal. Tracy Burke.
President.
Ed Huber. Matthew Donanna.
Here.
Darryl Littlefield. Absent. Julie Mundon. Is absent. Donna Rogers. Absent. Matthew Shally.
Here.
Richard Walzak.
Here.
And Courtney Wampall is not here, but expected to. Yes, and you'll notice a lot of vacancies tonight. So Courtney is running about 10 minutes late. She will be here shortly. And then we have Darrell, Julie, and Donna are representing us at the PSAB conference this week. So that's why they're out. And Mike, I'm going to postpone the approval for the minutes for the short file as well. So Jessica, I would like to invite you up and walk with the presentation before it's finally.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to report that we had an extremely successful first, third Friday. It was a beautiful night. Anyone who came out, I think weather really helped, but we had wonderful group of vendors. We had some amazing food trucks and beverages. In fact, pretty much everybody that was serving food and or selling food as vendors sold out that night. So a lot of people are extremely happy. They've been emailing me and contacting me about the next one. We have a lot of new vendors that have signed up for not only June, but months thereafter. So, you know, we're just really in a good planning stage for that, already looking past that and soon. The art jam as well, talking to vendors that I think will be a good fit for that event. We're talking already. We received, I believe, the Christmas tree for all our holiday things. So we have all of that already here.
You received the tree?
Received the tree. Yes, Mike sent me a packing list that it had arrived. So and I've talked to the company. So everything there.
Julia Crew, they sent a picture today of a tree similar.
That was actually our sales rep. Yeah.
It looked quite large, but I think this one's helpful.
So the one that was in the picture that they sent was a 14-foot tree and ours is 22 feet.
Wow.
So, so I'll be just reviewing.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, it is. But so I'm just gonna double check all that, but everything's really going smoothly. We're really trying to talk to a lot of the businesses as well to get them involved more in these events right now, too. So we're having meetings. I'm meeting with some people, introducing myself because I'm new to the position, but really getting out there. I really would love to touch base on the fact that I would love to have the access to the Red Brick parking lot. So many people came up to me at the end of that night as well as email that said that was just a fantastic location. So many parents felt exactly why we wanted to use it in the first place, that their kids were safe, they were off the main street. They love that the downtown scoop truck was there. He was busy all night. He said it was fantastic to be down there. And I have a lot of vendors who I think are kid-centric that would really make that whole area such a real kid zone instead of just the, you know, bounce house and the ice cream. So I really think that would be a great way if we are able to ask for that usage for the remaining third Fridays.
Chief, Council, and Mayor, any objections to opening up that lot for continuing use during all remaining third Fridays? Works very well. Yeah, we had.
Yeah.
I'm fresh back from Australia, hence reserve a Courtney seat. But I heard nothing, but.
Yeah, everyone's happy.
As well. Okay, without objection.
Thank you very much. So we'll have an even bigger and better kid zone and draw more people down there and hopefully, you know, keep things moving in this good direction here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Evening. My name is Dan Hauser. I'm representing Concert Sundays in the Park. We had our first concert last night. So programs are out. There's a few over there, some in the back. If you didn't, if you need to get something, we're also handing them out at the at the concert. First of all, I want to say thank you to the borough for last 36 years of having the concerts. You let us use the park and the amenities of the area. And the old garage, now we have a new building that we're moving into. So we just want to say thank you for letting us work with the borough and everything. Real quick, if you want to open up your programs to page six, I can go through this for hours and but I'm not going to take Mark Rosenberg's spot because usually he usually did this and we'd go page by page and give little stories about each person, but I'm just gonna hit a couple of highlights. Page 16 is next week. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Jumped ahead. Next week is Beetle Mania. Also, it's the grand opening of the park ribbon cutting. So the Rotary is going to be there, the Service Club, but they're also going to be doing a ribbon cutting at 5 o'clock. So if anyone wants to come and see the festivities, then that'd be awesome. We start at 6 o'clock, serving food, and 7 o'clock entertainment starts. And it's Beetle Mania is a highlight for next week. Now, it does say Elvis Tribute Band underneath it. So that was like the sixth Beatle that maybe people didn't realize, but nevertheless, there was just a misprint. So if anyone asks you that question, if you turn to the next page, page 16 is Spill Off Your Funk Authority. They're very popular through the area, a good party band, play a lot of party music. You'll have a great time. And another highlight would be the page 22, East Street Shuffle. So Bruce Springsteen music. And then one last one I just want to bring to your attention is the page 26, the Marion Concert Band. And if you know Doug Eschbach, he's the director of Generations. He's also a member of that band as well. So there's some good bands to come out and see. Also, if you go back to our page 32, there are all of our service clubs. Every week we have a different service club. Gives you information about what they do for our community and how much they help us out as partners, but what they do for the community. There's little bios on each one of them. So if you want to take a couple of minutes and look at that and let them know, you know, see what they do and if you want to help them out. Once again, I just want to say thank you. Concert Sunday is up and running and it's a great time. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Mr. Grant, I want to put you on the spot. I see you're here. We're gonna make the motion tonight. I don't foresee any issues, but if you'd like to make a comment or anything, I'd be glad to have you.
Good evening. Just thought I would update Borough Council on our progress with Towngate Commons as it relates to what we know as PAD F and our proposed Starbucks. As you recall, we were before Borough Council for a condition use hearing back in February because of the requirement for Starbucks to have a drive-through. And we were, you know, that would result in a positive outcome. And so we proceeded to to work with our engineer and the borough engineer. We made submission for land development. And we've received review letters from both the borough engineer, LVL Engineering, and Montgomery County Planning Commission. We were before planning commission last month and worked back and forth with various comments. And I believe at this point, we're well on our way to addressing those comments. And so, yeah, this evening, we're before you requesting final approval condition upon satisfying those review comments. And I believe there was a couple waivers that we requested that Planning Commission had recommended. So I'm prepared to answer any questions. Anybody have this evening? If not, I also have our engineer, Susan Rice, from STA Engineering here this evening. So, yes.
Council, any questions?
Do you have an estimated timeline on construction, finishing, opening?
Yeah, so we're still working through the corporate program with Starbucks and we're hoping to finalize those things in the next probably 60 days. Then we work through the architectural plans and make submission into the into the borough for a building permit. So we're anxious to get underway. We're actually going to get a cheat start on some of the site work shortly. Actually, this week. And, yeah, I think we're targeting March of 2024 as a tentative date right now. So first quarter 2024. And we'll keep the borough abreast as 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 things work through that.
Slightly off topic, but at one time you had come to us about a daughter's school or something.
Yes, yes. So that's still in the works, different operator, but we have an agreement pending for what we know as B1 and B2 pad sites. And I think they're trying to work things out on their end with an actual operator for that. And so we hope that that bears fruit. They're in due diligence currently right now.
Also, has that early childhood?
It is. It is. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, we had been before you in March of last year in 2022 and had hoped to move that process along. And then it hit a little bit of a bump in the road, but that's come back, come back around. So we hope the second second time is fruitful. We look forward to getting rid of all that excess fill material that's sitting on pads B1 and B2 currently as well, so.
Right. It looks like the start of a foundation coast to Monroe, but that's not right because I think the street will go through there.
Correct. You probably saw the existing, that used to be a triplex right there that we had demolished, right? So the Monroe. Yeah, so you're probably seeing just maybe the outline of where that was correct. Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll be starting work here over the next couple of weeks with our access in off of Broad Street and trying to make that site look, that side of the project looked just as good as we think things look now out on County Line Road. Since we opened up the Dollar General and Jesse's and that entrance in there, Ryan Holmes is going to be opening up for sales, I think, very shortly as well.
Steph, I'm coming again.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on in a little bit. All right, now that we have a quorum, I'm going back to agenda item two.
Sorry.
May I have two different motions, please, for that?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the May 1st, 2023 regular Borough Council meeting minutes.
I'll second.
I have motions by Council Shally and Wampole for approval of the May 1st regular Borough Council meeting minutes. So I'll favorably say aye. Aye, and a no. Okay, that passes. Mike and Mike asked for the work session on the 15th.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the May 15th, 2023 Borough Council Work Session Meeting Minutes.
I'll second. I have to cross it out. I have motions by the Max, Council Shally, and Donanna for approval of the work session meeting held on May 15th. All favor, please say aye. Aye, and a no. Okay, we're finished with correspondence. Well, Mike, let's double check. Is there any additional correspondence?
Not at all.
Okay, very good. Then we'll move on to Administrator and Mr. Mayor. We've had a couple of exciting meetings.
And I'm happy to report I have nothing to report. No excitement at all. So I have no report.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. And Chief.
Good evening. I do have a report. I emailed my May report out on board last week. The public, it was rather busy month for us. 100-day traffic stop, 48th, 13 vehicle crashes, with only one injury. We had 13 arrests throughout the month. We assisted other agencies 56 times. We had a total of 854 calls, so we're averaging 27 and a half calls a day. We're up 32% over this point last year in our call volume. 4 to 12 has now become our busiest time. A lot of it's because that's when kids are getting out of school. The weather's nice with the parks open. That's the expected. As I've mentioned at previous meetings, the school district now has cameras on the side of buses. Well, that's school district transportation companies. Thus far, we've had 22 violations reported to us and we were able to issue a website. We have to do a little bit of education with the busing company because unfortunately, sometimes they're a little slow in turning the lights on and can't always blame the drivers. There has to be some common sense, but we're going to be working with them. All the departments involved with them will be working with them over the summer to reduce that. I'm very happy to say all of our officers have now taken a class in dealing with the mental health crises and de-escalation. Certain departments now trained to deal with that, which is something we all need. We had our first coffee with your cops this past Saturday. It went very well. Actually, a lot of people show up, goes to the park to us, which I'm rather honored by. We will be doing that again. Probably in a couple of months. We have to find a, trying to get some more locations. As I mentioned, the board, one of our part-time officers has stepped down due to family reasons. So I will be seeking permission to try to find a replacement part-time officer to fill that gap. Luckily, it's a very generic size, so we can actually remove all of his equipment. We have been very busy trying to close cases. We had several open ones due to a lot of work from Detective Rudner and the rest of the department. We managed to thus far close 25 open cases, resulting in some of those arrests I mentioned earlier. Correct. One of the things I had here, we 13 arrests last month. It is the 50th month. We've had five arrests this month so far. I'm hoping that trend doesn't continue. Nothing serious, but our DUIs are going up as are some of our harassment calls, but we are dealing with them as they come in. I'm still waiting on the information to come back from one of the grants that I put in for through the state representative, Val and Gary. He says it's in the process and I have all confidence in him. We finally got our Facebook page back up and running. We're out of Facebook sales. And it's been very well received. And with the park being as busy as it is, our current enforcement toys been working with the security company. We now have many more cameras facing the park and borough property that we monitor as closely as we can. They're recording, which is nice if there's a problem. And more of those are going to go up. So that's all good. So that's about all I have. Unless you have any questions, right?
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions.
So, Matt, when's the next public safety committee meeting?
I think June 15.
15 is what we were planning on for. Yeah, we, there were some things that came out of the work session. I wasn't there, but
for us to tackle in that meeting. So we got some things to recover that.
Yeah, that's an important meeting. I want to make sure the mayor knows about that at 7:00 PM here on 15th. No, I think.
It's either 5 or 6. I'll double check and make sure to email it over.
Yeah, let's.
Let's make sure. Time after 4, but I'm not sure if it's.
We'll just leave it at 8:00. Anytime after 4.
Okay, we'll be here.
No, that's important.
It's an important meeting, Chief. I know you got a lot of, you know, a lot of things you need to discuss seriously, and I think the committee's the proper forum for that. Courtney?
For the camp, are they live streamed so that you guys can access them real time in the park?
We have them on, I have my desk, we have the administrative office at the moment.
Okay.
And I'm setting up a monitor in the back of the patrol areas. When the officers are searching reports, they'll be able to see it.
Okay. And the numbers, so 5% decrease in arrests year-to-date, but call volume continues to go up. Can you just kind of explain the discrepancy in that and like what that?
Well, not every call would go on as a crime.
Okay.
And that's basically it.
Okay.
Or I also only count arrests when we've actually taken somebody into custody. We're honest about our numbers.
Okay.
So we do have several warrants out there for people that we're looking for. They don't count yet because we haven't taken them into custody.
Gotcha. And then the crimes, the part below that where it has a decrease and then it has decrease, increase, are those crimes, are they charges or they just arrests? Like, is that when you charge?
Those are crimes that are reported to us that have a factual basis.
But not necessarily, we're going to leave it charges yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
But your part one crimes are your serious crimes, your parts two are your lesser crimes. And when we get those numbers, those are crimes. We, those numbers are actually a lot higher than are reported to us, but due to certain circumstances, they're unfounded. They actually happened somewhere else, whatever it may be. So for our I didn't put how many down. I had this one. Generically speaking, say we had 10 last month. Two of them probably didn't happen in town and two after investigation were completely unfounded. So that takes us down to six.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I only go by the true numbers.
Gotcha. Okay. What's the variety club camp that you guys are helping out?
That's located in Worcester. Once a year, that's a camp special. I hate to say special name. I don't know exactly what the term is. But they have a public safety day, fire trucks, police cars. They don't have their police departments PSP, so they may or may not be there. But they try to get officers from around the area because the kids are from Montgomery County. They're not from there. So they're being pulled. We may have residents there. So we go out there for two hours and just demonstrate our equipment and say hi to the kids and get stickers.
Nice. Awesome. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions for Chief?
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. President, I still have to.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council has our brief report for the month.
We'll do a motion on the in Azure and Brass College. I think it was given due. There's no drama with that. And I just had one question. Might be better for the manager, but is there anything pending from your perspective on the Cherry Lane property sale agreement? I think you've done full review on that and we're, Mike, we're just waiting for.
We need to get the. We need to get parcel recorded. So I'll double check. I'll make a note to report back at work session, but I'll get a report from CKS. But we're working on developing for the entire track. So that was, that was a huge milestone to get through. So now that we have that approval, we're just in the process of finalizing the record plan. And Frank Conugill is requiring that we postpone for the public approval. So we'll, we'll have to get a letter of credit arranged at some point to to address that matter. But once the plan is recorded, the law is recognized. It's a separate law.
Gotcha. And so what, does Bob need anything else as far as the agreement or?
No, not until the plan is recorded. The consultant will be in a position to show the property.
Exactly. But from your perspective, we're not outstanding with anything. Perfect. I think, Mike, one last question on that. We weren't expecting to start until September anyway. I believe maybe even a little bit later. Okay. Public work.
Mr. President, everybody, I believe, has a copy of my report. I'll just hit a couple of the here projects, even working rooms, what we're planning on. We were down at the freight building, part of getting up to the old open act, so. Got a good job on that. Got to the diner, pouring the platform up above the back wall, which you really can't see from the street, but he had a ramp up deception, one pad made and started a second pad that he's working on right now toward the border. People use stamped concrete around that border of the concrete path up there. It's looking pretty good. So I have to kind of walk up the ramp a little bit. We did hire, we have a normal two part-time helpers. We have one that works eight hours a day and that's a senior from high school in Southerton here. Going to college, he's going to deal, will end with us for eight hours during the summer. And we have a part-time gentleman that helps us in for like five hours during the evening. The pool got that thing up and running pretty, pretty easily. We haven't major, major issues. That's been up and running now pretty good and actually went through a couple of weekends already. But I think it's a little crowded up there already. We did complete the first phase of Wild Avenue and that sanitary sewer, we always called the first phase, which probably lies through down just short of three quarters of a block. Go all through the management, including all the laterals that needed to be replaced. That's been replaced. And we are trying to get on schedule with PK to face that, that three-quarter section, learn with that. No one faced that yet this before the pool gets too busy. Things we're working on, we started the banners. We had quite a few banners up and flagged up on the morning day. We still have a couple of streets to do yet, so we are still working on that and a few more banners to put up, too. Yeah, everything up around the park and all the main street and Broad Street. I think we had the banners up for the morning day, but we are still filling the rest of the holes. Brush is very heavy. Well, eight hours today. We're not even going to add the first section yet. We're working on the area of the firehouse, main street, three lines or Broad Street, three lines and main street, the school lane, we're in that little corner right now. Up in the park, we're planning on, we're scheduling and it will be done. We are going to be seeding and sodding some of the dirt there around it. That needs to be completed yet and redoing some of the other dirt that was done last year. That schedule, it was supposed to be today, but actually be starting tomorrow. We're going to spread the sod on Thursday. PK scheduled to come in either Thursday or Friday. He'll make the, take care of the paving there between the pavilion and the, the new structure and follow that out to the parking lot. And then Chad is coming back or his guy coming back and saw that end of the half. Actually cleaned up by, by the dedication that the mayor mentioned. And we also started street sweeping last week. We're only out like two or three days, but now we're out pretty much every day. Now we'll be sweeping. That started also.
Questions, Christine?
I know we spent some, some money and labor on the pool, the tile on the bathroom. That all looks good, opened up just fine.
Yeah, it's up and running. Yeah. Can't see any major issues with the but yeah, we, you had to kind of try and cure that during the fall slash winter.
Yeah.
And you had to be in the water to get some of it. We've got some of our members, some of our employees have wetsuits, so.
Question. When you're doing brush collection, if somebody abuses their privileges of putting brush on the street, do you use?
We have them. We have orange tanks that have them stored.
But I've noticed that in several places that people are putting out trees and expecting us to take it off the street.
Yeah, what's the diameter you can take?
The office staff. The, the office staff tells them, uh, I think it's pretty boy with all the things, and that there are no lines, no grass.
But one inch. One to six inches.
But there's no, we don't. Want to pay?
Yeah, we, if they call in, if they have a service come in to remove a tree, the service needs to remove the tree. We don't want to be in the business of chipping up an entire tree, you know, purely designed to help the homeowner with in the brush trimming up a tree or something, just, just to help the homeowner get their coffees cleaning, but uh, but yeah, we can't spend a whole day doing it, doing it.
The whole trees. Wow, so you, you put it, or are saying this is inappropriate use of our services?
Yeah, we're trying to know when, you're around, you know when a tree come came in and dropped it and just put it, we, we, we called them a couple of them.
You drive past one every day, I'm sure you know which one I'm talking about. But anyway, I'm sure there's others.
Yeah, Broad Street, I quit a few. I, I, I know that one guy that had the bill file, he did the rental properties, but he did clean that himself and bring it down.
And that's still, still a use of our resources. I, it's your thing, I just. If you have our backing, if it gets to be too much.
That's the, that's the, we can, we can get to them. And there are, and people are learning that to spread it out properly, although pick apart, all goes to one side, you know, when they lay it out, so it actually goes pretty quick. It's just uh, we can only hold like thirteen, twelve or thirteen yards and then drop them, you gotta go down, then go back, so that's, that's hurts us a little bit with the falling, but as far as chipping the piles, I think you can fairly quickly down. And may, this is always our busy time, May, uh, June, May, we will have a, maybe one more month, we'll see it having that little tie down.
So you mentioned the freight building and maybe been gone for three weeks, it's an amazing difference, like your crew's done a phenomenal job, if you get a chance to walk by council, it's uh, definitely have a vision of.
Yeah, we, we have the concrete trucks out there, so we have it staked out now to put the next set of steps in, closer to the freight building.
Right.
And then uh, then we'll start coming around at the front of it.
Yeah, we're still a ways away, but Jessica, that might be another opportunity for some small events there as well, because it's really coming together, there'll be a nice big uh, patio out there.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to clean the steps up that were done first, soon as we get back down there to get that open book to check out for Broad Street, so that people can get up. Not on the new pad, but always seeing what's getting golden there, it's always nice.
And were you able to procure all of your uh, block? That, that retained all block?
Yeah, yeah, we got a closure company that we've been wanting to bring out, so that's, just Gordon Brown, I mean, you know, basically, yeah.
Of another section of wall I have to install, and then the uh, uh, handicap land, yeah, in front of the building, so I still have quite a bit.
Still ways to go.
On that building, the code enforcement report said, three-phase electrical equipment has been delivered, waiting on Verizon to change the pole for PP and L equipment, no date. Any update on that hour situation?
Well, we did locate a three-phase meter base, which we were getting reports about being months away, but now we're trying to get into uh, uh, the utility schedule, unfortunately, both up here and down at the uh, freight building. The poles are actually owned by Verizon, so we need to coordinate Verizon to put in the poles, PP and L to put up their switchgear. And uh, we're, right now, uh, Verizon is not giving us a schedule, so I don't know when.
But did council have better than last one, what we?
Yeah, it's now a matter of getting to, to these schedules, and that could still be a while, but we'll, we'll keep going along with that, that's the best we can do.
But we're no longer critical path with this equipment, so, and we have plenty of work to do before.
Yeah, down at the freight building, the three phases up around Broad Street, they gotta bring that down front.
We're getting all the items of your, of your report out of order today, Gary. Anything else, Steve? Thank you, sir. Okay. Now.
He does.
Uh, just, just briefly, uh, as far as the meeting schedule is concerned for uh, June. Uh, there is no business plan for the planning commission for the month of June, so the June seventh meeting of the planning commission has been uh, canceled. And uh, we expect that renewed engineers will be in a position to uh, present revised plans at the uh, early December, I think, the meeting on the planning commission. The next meeting. So uh, so no planning commission meeting this, this week. Uh, the Borough Council work session will be on June seventeenth. And we'll have a few items to discuss and a couple uh, reports to give more information on the discussion we just had.
The nineteenth?
Isn't the nineteenth, I think it's.
Seventeenth is Saturday.
The nineteenth, June nineteenth.
Okay.
Monday, June nineteenth will be our work session. Oh, and uh, Borough Council meeting in July, uh, July third is a Monday, but then you have the July fourth holiday, so we're going to push the July Borough Council meeting to Monday, July tenth.
Work session.
Uh, work session will be the following Monday, but just because people uh, and vacations uh, probably be better attended if we look at July tenth meeting uh, for council meetings. Far as the business room this evening, there are only two items. And uh, I did have the schematic up for those, there's three slides of uh, the Starbucks property that Brian Grant talked about, the uh, top left is the uh, layout of uh, of Starbucks and there'll be an entrance coming in off of East Broad Street called Sauer's Way. And uh, uh, the Starbucks will be uh, located right at that intersection, it's actually a commercial pass site on the other side of Sauer's, and at some point in time, we are looking forward to another commercial use of there. Uh, a little difficult uh, to look at, but uh, the planning commission uh, worked with uh, Brian Grant and uh, Starbucks on the architectural of the building and uh, um, I think Starbucks has come back with a, a very nice architectural look, it is very difficult to see it on this slide, but a lot of brick and uh, uh, stuck out on the building, so uh, a lot of different breaks in the building, awnings. So I think it'll be a nice uh, commercial building uh, to uh, anchor uh, the entrance into this new development. Planning Commission and Montgomery County Planning Commission have been working on the revised plans for Starbucks and uh, at their last meeting, they uh, did recommend uh, conditional approval, uh, there's still a few minor details to work out in the uh, the plan set that I know Susan Rice is working on, a couple of comments from our engineer, a couple waivers associated with the site, a lot to do with landscaping and there's certain areas on the site where shade trees won't work, but shrubbery will work, so uh, there's some waivers to uh, do some uh, uh, additional shrubberies and uh, building itself, I believe, is, is fine, but uh, we'll see the final uh, construction plans for that uh, in the coming months for, for permitting. So our recommendation is to uh, to approve it with the uh, conditions and uh, uh, let the project uh, begin to move forward. The bottom left-hand corner uh, concerns the uh, uh, second item on the agenda, uh, Brass Collar Brewing is our main tenant in the freight building, um. And they have uh, reached an agreement with the name, Menagerie Foods, Menagerie Foods is going to operate the kitchen facilities uh, with their. A, a little section of it, um, and then Brass Collar Brewing will be uh, actually brewing their product as well as uh, distributing their product. Food sales will come from Menagerie, both inside, and I believe Menagerie also has uh, food trucks, so uh, there are not going to be food trucks at this site, but uh, they will utilize the kitchen facilities, I think, to help support some of their other business enterprises elsewhere. Uh, the uh, license agreement between those two parties was uh, approved by SEPTA. And our solicitor has been working with the attorneys representing both parties, and we are recommending that the Borough Council uh, approve the execution of this license agreement between what, what would really be uh, two tenants inside the building. Both of the tenants are listing the borough as additional insured on their respective policies, so uh, the borough, I think, is well protected by uh, both our lease with Brass Collar and the uh, license agreement now with Menagerie Foods. Uh, but that just gives you a little feel for the inside of the building, it's a small building. Uh, we did uh, put a patio addition on the building, which you see for additional outdoor seating, which at some point in time, I would expect that that would be enclosed, much like uh, Northbound Restaurant is doing with uh, with their uh, platform space. And then we also have the uh, extended plaza, which we're hoping gets used, uh, it's not pictured here, but we're hoping that that plaza space uh, starts seeing some use, so we can draw some people into, into that space, but uh, things are coming together. And that is everything for now.
Mike, question. On the freight building, the kitchen dish pit, is that strictly going to be used for cleaning? It seems like it's out of the process of kitchen.
That's for uh, yeah, uh, washing pots, pans, mop sinks, um, stuff like that will be, be there, the main cooking will be done at the front.
Any other questions for mine?
Thank you, sir. Okay, well, we want the committee report. Any committee report, parts?
I have a couple, actually.
All right.
Um, for public outreach. Uh, Borough Table at Third Friday will be uh, six sixteen, so next Thursday, I believe they were also there right this past uh, Thursday. Office hours are on the seventeenth from eleven to one, and we're continuing to work on the content for Facebook page. That's that one. Um, Parks has, so baking at the pool, right, it's been going great, I've been there, every day it's been open so far. Super happy with how they're doing, cautiously optimistic, I've been in contact with them, um, I have a direct line to everyone, so it's been really good. Super thrilled with Snack Fan, I've gotten really good feedback on that too, Joe and his team are doing an awesome job, um, they just, everything, the food quality's really good, really reasonable prices. Um, you know, I haven't had any complaints, I've been there, and it's just been going really good, I'm thrilled. Try not to let them know I'm too happy.
We won them, but what a great turnaround from last year.
It's really good, and I feel like they probably like you, they like me again, it's fine, we're, we're friends again. Um, that's that one, and Parks, you pretty much covered everything that's going over there, um, I think that's it. Economic development, that was covered by all the freight builders as well, so I'm good.
And Dallas was the office hours, right?
Office hours, Third Friday.
Okay, anything, anything else?
Yeah.
Public safety will be.
There we go, I think there's, these four items specifically identified, I can go over and, and discuss, I'm sure we'll all come out of it.
Okay. All right, Ben, I have one, Mike, I think I sent you a file.
Oh, I can put it up there, I copied council what I said.
Uh, okay, I was gonna let the public see, okay, it was a bit of an eye chart anyway. So on behalf of Julie Munden, who's leading our search committee for the Borough Managerial Replacement. And uh, it's gonna be tough, but uh, we had on thirty-one May, we had the logistics coordination meeting with the Manor Center. So we effectively hired a consultant to help us with that search. As of this past Friday, the position is closed still. And uh, Counselor Shali, if you guys could post out on Facebook page uh, the link for uh, for the application, if anyone in the audience knows of people that may be interested in a, in a manager uh, position, it's a great opportunity, it's also uh, we're advertising it as an opportunity, depending on the experience of him or her to have some mentorship, because Mike will uh, embarrassingly be around if necessary all the way through the uh, fall of twenty twenty-four. Then uh, we're going to have a short timeframe for, for the application, so we'll close out the application on Friday, June twenty-third, so it'll be three weeks from, from the posting. Uh, the following week, by the twenty-eighth, we'll uh, begin a first pass at, at the applications uh, with the search committee. On Wednesday, July fifth, it gets real, so council, just listening to some of the dates, won't be needed in the first round of interviews, but uh, it will be the search committee only, and we anticipate six, maybe as many as eight, eight candidates. And uh, in the handout that Mike gave you guys, uh, I just put in there in reference uh, for the regular session and work session, so they have, there's no candidate activity there. Uh, so it's a series of Wednesdays, Wednesday, July fifth is first round interviews, Wednesday, July twelve is second round interviews, where we'll probably have narrowed the field to three, maybe as many as four or five candidates, and uh, we'll have Mike join us for, for that round. Uh, our goal immediately following that would be to narrow the field to two finalists. And we will present them to you guys, that council, on, at a special executive session, okay? Because there's still a high degree of confidentiality there, so we'll have a full council executive session on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth. So that'll be, uh, we're really gonna advertise that more as a meet and greet with, with them, we'll uh, and you should plan for we'll, we'll break our standing role, uh, just plan for a long evening, just in case, we'll, we'll probably see each candidate for about forty-five minutes that evening with a fifteen-minute uh, break in between. And then we may need to go, as long as we meet post nine PM. So that'll be a seven to ten PM session, so after nine PM, uh, it'll be the work of council and mayor to narrow uh, this down to somewhere we'd like to give an offer to. Now, of course, there's flexibility here, things, you, you know, this is just, if, if the stars line up properly, we would extend an offer by the end of July, and it would be a conditional offer, after which there would, uh, uh, condition based on the full background and drug screening and, and uh, uh, some type of uh, agreement. If that all goes well, the the regular session in September will not be until Monday, September eleventh, due to Labor Day, so at that time, we'll make a formal public uh, uh, appointment and, and motion and uh, meet that candidate and his or her family. So that's the raw logistical plan, you know, there was uh, uh, a lot of great work, I really wanna uh, commend Julie for staying on top of this, uh, she's been in perpetual meetings with Nicole, with Nicole Beckett, and Nicole is excellent, she had uh, previously been a manager herself, so she's got a really great insight to everything that we're about to go through. So, any questions from council for the mayor?
All right, clear, there's mud, right?
So, you know, we've been saying. So, you know, we've been saying this month after month because. For the audience, I've said repeatedly, there's no greater task than this council, I believe, that. You know, we've had Mike, we've had the pleasure of him being here for forty years. And some really big shoes could fill, so we've said from the beginning, finding a replacement for him is, is really nothing more important than the administration of our local government. So we'll keep you updated on as, as you proceed. And I don't, no other committee reports, then we'll move, now we'll. Through the bills, and please have that as one motion for recurring and regular bill.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the bills for the month of May, two thousand twenty-three. So also approved to pay recurring bills for June, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Thank you both. I have motions by Counselor Danana and Walsall for approval of the. Regular bills for the month of May as well as the recurring bills for June, two thousand twenty-three. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor for those approvals, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No questions unanimous. And by, but and then we would, going this long, I would have opened up public comment maybe a little bit sooner. Keep that heavy guys wait. So this time I will open up the podium for any members of the public, residents, property owners, business owners. If you would just come up to the podium and state your name and address or business, and we'd love to hear what you have to say. Don't be shy. Now I'm staring people down. Usually I can force video here.
Look, we can still make it an eight P M deadline.
No. Okay. I hear you, Courtney. I don't have a reputation for finishing before eight thirty. All right, Courtney, we'll do it.
Although, did you hear about EDB, BD session last time?
Yeah, and you're absent.
Record.
My, my heart was broken. Okay, then, let's move on to the business. All right, first is for Towngate Commons. Plan presented by Mr. Grant and the Starbucks, so it's a, it's a lengthy motion, but someone pulled me up the muscle through it.
Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to approve the amended final land development plan for Towngate Commons Phase Two B Starbucks. Subject to compliance with the review letter of the, of L V L Engineering Group dated April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. The Montgomery County Planning Commission Review Letter dated May first, twenty twenty-three. Architectural renderings for Starbucks Shell as prepared by R E A L Services last revised in May second, twenty twenty-three. And approval of the waiver request as outlined in the S T A Engineering Letter dated May third, twenty twenty-three, as revised. And further requiring the borough engineer to approve the higher species of shrubbery.
The second. Okay, so I have motions by Counselor Shali and Walsell. I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit of this. It is a tongue twister, for sure. Sally says she, she said, uh, to approve the amended final land development plan for Towngate Commons Phase Two B. Starbucks, subject to the compliance review letter of L V L Engineering dated January sixth, April twenty twenty-three. The Montgomery County Planning Commission also reviewed the letter, the Sauer's Plan Committee, and approved. The renderings for Starbucks Shell as approved by Real Services last revised on May the second. And will also include an approval of a waiver request as outlined in the S T A Engineering Letter dated May third, as revised. All right, are there any comments, questions, or debate on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your patience. I appreciate quite a work. It's really, I agree with you, it's really coming together. It looks wonderful and counting on, but. Okay, next will be, as discussed, the approval of the license agreement between Brass Collar and Menagerie Foods.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the license agreement between Brass Collar Brewing Company LLC and Menagerie Foods LLC dated. May tenth, twenty twenty-three, considering the use of the kitchen area and shared space at the Sowerson Train Station, free building, one hundred South Front Street, Sowerson, Tennessee, yeah.
I'll second.
Wow, Richard, you're getting in there tonight. Okay, I have motions by Counselor Wampole and Wallback to approve the license agreement between Brass Collar Brewing LLC and Menagerie Foods. Dated twenty, May twenty-three, running kitchen area and shared space and rent payment nature. Bill, three thousand, one hundred South Front Street. Are there any questions or comments on this moment? I do have one question for the manager. Mike, do you know, will, the Menagerie is historically been a food truck service company? So will they make food for the food trucks in the freight building kitchen as well?
It was mentioned in the meeting that he would be utilizing the kitchen to fit out some of his food trucks, but I'm not expecting. Like I said, the food trucks will not be in front of the building or, or really be part of this operation, but the food trucks I expect will be. Loaded and then taken elsewhere. But, but he does do food trucks as one of his principal businesses.
Right, so let me rephrase my question. So will the, will the freight building be used? In some capacity for him to outfit outgoing food truck?
Yeah, yeah, he would. He'll be preparing or. I don't know.
So there'll be some activity, what I'm getting, there'll be, there may be some activity there outside of the ultimately brass collars.
Yes, possibly, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, Ben. I read the motion, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mike, that's enough. All right, we're gonna, before I conclude the meeting, mayors, have one final comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to. Say that I had written something in the Independent this month. And it's worth repeating to all in public and to all of you that. I, we really, really work well together in Sowerton. I appreciate all of you. This year, well, I guess it was two years ago or a year and a half, we got five new members of council, a new mayor, we had a relatively new police chief. And it was kind of worrisome about what was gonna happen, and the results, I think, are the, the best. I enjoy working with all of you. I enjoy coming to these meetings. I hope you all can see that we like working with each other up here. And as is evidenced by some very close municipalities around us and around the country, that's just not the case. I think we're a dying breed in Sowerton here, and I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of all of you, so thanks.
I wrote an article, and thanks for listening here. Okay, then, motion to adjourn, make a motion to adjourn. All right. Thank you all for coming.